seventy six but it's gonna be beautiful it's chilly but beautiful so I'm glad glad to be here with you this morning hope you're having a wonderful wonderful morning it is Tuesday April the twentieth I know for some of y'all four twenty is a big deal before I get into that I want to wish a happy birthday out to Cameron Copeland that's my daughter's my granddaughter's father happy birthday Cam it's your birthday baby four twenty it's so funny he was born on four twenty and happy birthday to all of you who were born on four twenty today four twenty means a lot to different people you know means a lot to many different people today so first is National Cheddar Cheddar Fries Day so if you like cheddar fries yes it's your day baby um National pineapple upside down cake yeah if you like that that get your things on and and listen respect Lima beans today is National Lima Beans Lima Lima Bean Respect Day now I I can't even begin to understand why somebody set up a day to respect the Lima Bean but hey listen there we need to respect everything we doing life and a Lima Bean is one of the things that that that's a part of our lives I don't eat Lima Beans I just recently started eating like I don't even think they're string bean they're green beans not string bean I don't like green I don't like string bean green beans so we go to this restaurant and they got the best green beans around and I will just sit there and just eat green beans like literally like I'll just take up take a plate of green beans and just sit cuz they're steamed and they have like garlic they taste like they have like a tad bit of like sugar something on them but they are really good and I'll just sit there and just and and I wouldn't let me tell you something people that really know me know I'm just not a vegetable person I know I'm supposed to but I'm just not I'm better I'm way better than I used to be so now I eat spinach of course I've always eaten lettuce I eat I eat squash oh my god like I would never eat squash but my husband made me some squash with cheddar cheese on it probably cuz it had the cheese on it it was so good so I like squash I like green beans I like kale I like kale chips I don't really like kale kale um I had broccoli bob a couple times I actually liked that so I I'll eat like I'll eat like I don't like collard greens I'll eat raw cauliflower I will eat coleslaw but I won't eat cooked cabbage I don't like cooked cabbage I don't like collard greens I don't like mustard greens well that's not true cuz he made me some mustard greens one time and they were really good and I was like wow these are really good so I'm kinda weird like that I eat more vegetables now than I've ever eaten in my life like when I was a little girl I hated vegetables and so um I would tell my brother like hey I'll eat your I'll eat your meat if you eat my vegetables now here's the thing who don't want their meat but my brother will always trade with me and he would eat the vegetables and I would eat the meat yeah that that's probably my issue right now and so um I've always been that way though anyway it's National Cheddar Fries Day it's also National pineapple upside down cake which I don't like I do not like pineapple upside down cake I do not it's cooked up fruit in that cake don't like it and National uh Lima Bean Respect Day it's also four twenty so um I keep saying that because those who know what four twenty means y'all know what four twenty means you know so you if it's four twenty for you and you celebrate four twenty them cheddar fries and them Lima Beans and pineapple cake is gonna be really good for some of you yeah y'all don't know what it means it's like why she keep saying four twenty go look it up just go to Google and and Google four twenty and you'll see why I keep talking about four twenty but anyway happy birthday Cam enjoy your four twenty baby I know you will I know you will alright let's get on with our harvest cause brought to you by know that's Sergeant Michael Thies for the day Tuesday April the twentieth we gonna kick it off like we always do and that is with Aries you may find a rare antique today leave things as they are for the moment and focus on reaching your highest potential at work don't lament to friend to a friend about any grievances regarding your mate or it may be hard to rectify the relationship yeah listen I know sometimes we wanna we wanna we need somebody to talk to and somebody to vent to Aries but be careful because what happens is when you do tell your friends about your mate they look at your mate differently and so when is and by the time you have made up with them they're looking at you crazy like okay seriously you just told me such and such and now you over to like y'all in love I'm just trying to tell you so it's gonna be hard to rectify the relationship so just make sure your mate talk to him if you need to but just be careful because just know that once you tell your friends and if your friends love you they're gonna judge your your mate I'm just letting you know what I know alright Taurus you need to interact with others if you want to expand your knowledge you must watch your tendency to spend whatever you make put your energy into your work or money making ventures rather than into your emotional life today yeah put that energy into that money making ventures put it into your work don't put it into your emotional life cuz it could be that bad energy put it into work make some cash and come back to the emotional stuff later Gemini take a close take a close look at any contracts you sign in order to be sure exactly where you stand make changes that will enhance your appearance and entice potential partners don't make those you live with feel unloved or unworthy alright listen put on your makeup put on your lips and get my hair done shake my nails okay that's me that's me messing up the song again y'all know me y'all know I be messing people's song up anyway you can entertain you can entice potential partners a day Gemini you gotta get your hair done get your nails done put on a cute outfit listen a cute outfit could be jeans and some and some some cute shoes and they ain't even gotta be heels heels you know what I'm saying like I've seen people hook up my daughter hook up anything she'd put on I'd be like that's really cute right really cute so just know that you could put on anything and make it look fly make your hair look good though I could tell y'all when when my hair look good I can throw on some pajamas and look good and feel good yes cancer throw yourself into your work love could develop with someone of a different cultural background don't let others saddle you with guilt that is unwarranted mhm 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 throw yourself into your work today and love could develop with someone of different cultural backgrounds ah that's you know that's nice sometimes it's it's funny though cuz I dated this guy he was an African he was really nice though and he really liked me he wanted to marry me and um but he was so possessive I was like I can't my my mother loved him and when he got married we saw him at the pharmacy one time and he was married he had a baby and he told my mother Ms. Bell I tried to wait for she like I know my mother my mother if she could have picked my husband my husband and my mother had a really great relationship and I'm I'm sure she pretty happy that we got married cuz they had a wonderful relationship but but she would have picked me some other dudes before man I was like I'm not I'm not even trying to date that guy it was it was it was so funny cuz there's this one guy and you know I was young so I was really young but this is one guy he drove a station wagon right and you know I'm young I think I'm flying everything so he took me on a date and he had a station wagon but I drove myself cuz I had a I had a brand new Nissan Sentra nobody couldn't tell me nothing right I had my brand new Nissan Sentra day they actually lifted up the showroom glass so I could pull out and so he had a he had on like one little shirts like little church shirts with the pocket on it right so he had a little short sleeve shirt had a little pocket on it he had a station wagon and he was like um yeah um I I I I know I can get a good a better car but you know my my daddy said um you can't live in a car you live in a house so I'm saving my money for a house now I'm young and crazy I'm like okay right and I was like saying I said man I'm not about to ride in no station wagon so I told my mother that she said that's the one you need right there that boy got some value he gonna buy a house I was like yeah you riding the station wagon man her we used to crack him about stuff like that cuz she if she could have picked my husband she would have picked a bunch of bunch of jokes I didn't pick I'm like eh eh nope not gonna happen and and the guy from Africa she loved him now his family was well off his mother was a doctor his father was a lawyer he was gonna buy me a BMW everybody thought I was nuts they was like you better get that BMW I was like absolutely would not take his BMW no way not gonna do it that that I didn't like him like that he was cool we were friends but mm-mm nope he was like his and 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 his parents lived in Paris or or England or somewhere and he wanted to take me to visit and all that and they my friends were like you better try to get that you better try to go on that trip I was like I ain't going nowhere I ain't taking no BMW I ain't marrying him I ain't going nowhere but he was a nice guy he wound up getting married and having some kids he didn't marry me I married my husband who I love Leo be cautious be cautious who you deal with financially you will be you will be erratic and quite likely to make personal mistakes you will do well with clients today alright listen be cautious who you deal with financially watch your coins right if you don't understand what you're signing don't sign it if you need some clarification about something hire an attorney just be careful with your financials and who you trust today Virgo get out and have some fun you're in the mood to spend some money changes in your domestic scene are evident yeah you're in the mood to spend some money today uh Virgo I know I was in the mood to spend some money last night y'all it was about twelve o'clock at night I was on Amazon and something said put the lap put the iPad down don't you spend a dime you know cuz I I I have these ideas about things for the business like when I can't sleep and then I go to Amazon of course Amazon has what you're looking for and so I go to Amazon it was about midnight and I'm like I should I had I got four things in my shopping cart but something said put it down don't do it put it down and I did I put it down I didn't do it um and I'm glad I did but I had like four things in the shopping cart so I understand Virgo you wanna spend some money today I get it alright listen we're going to a song I'll be right back after the song to give you more of the harvest cause brought to you by know that the Sergeant Michael Thies and stay tuned
is why you always wanna be around her be around her now I've come to terms over you and although it hurts there's nothing I wouldn't do I've come to terms over you and although it hurts there's nothing I wouldn't do but I am I play I play but I don't mind no mind no be like I I play I play cuz I'm a needed upgrade upgrade but I am I play I play but I don't mind no mind no be like I I play I play cuz I'm a needed upgrade upgrade yeah but I don't mind no no cuz I'm a needed upgrade
upgrade welcome back welcome back as you go Audrey Bell Kearney giving you the daily harvest cause brought to you by know that the Sergeant Michael Thies and we're gonna pick it up with Libra avoid lovers who already have a relationship even if it's a bad one mhm someone you least expect may not have your best interest at heart you would be wise to control your spending so your debts don't get out of hand yeah somebody you least expect may not have your best interest at heart yeah and listen if you if they in a relationship don't get involved in it don't be the third part of their relationship you don't need the love triangle if it's a bad relationship wait till they get out of it if they really wanna get out of it let them get out of it first alright Scorpio don't settle for less than the best it's a good time for a long way to relationships to begin problems with family with females you live with or work with will try your patience and cause your tempers to flare up yes somebody gonna piss you off today Scorpio some lady some female is gonna piss you off mhm yep it's a good time for long awaited relationships to begin you've been waiting on this person for a long time now you both are free go ahead do your thing alright long as it's long as it's not at work you don't wanna be at work you don't wanna be at work with that person I'm just trying to help you out Sagittarius you may be emotional if you allow your lover to take advantage of your good nature you can handle situations that require contact with institutions or large corporations put your energy into self improvement programs that promise to make you into a better you listen anytime you can improve yourself is a good thing so now listen here it's gonna take you though like the program is just gonna help you you gotta do the real work I understand they say put your put your you know put your energy into self improvement programs but you gotta do the work like the program is there to help you to guide you you have to do the work alright I'm just trying to help you out I'm just trying to help y'all Sagittarius Capricorn this would not be the best day to try to push your ideas or concerns focus your efforts on details and keep yourself in order keep yourself in order to finish your work this day was meant for love make creative changes to your resident this day was meant for love every day is meant for love that's the way I wanna see it may not feel like that to you but I'm going to say every day is meant for love okay okay Aquarius get busy on those home improvement projects that you've been procrastinating about yep spend time with family and relatives friends and relatives um travel for pleasure don't be disappointed if you don't get your way emotionally don't be disappointed just suck that junk up that's what that's what we say in my house like something be bothering you be like suck that junk up you know why we get that I get that from I get that from my nephew Jalen um and my brother I think my I think he had um hurt himself or he was in pain or something after a football game and they were like suck that junk up so we all say it now like when something is tough like suck that junk up so yeah don't be disappointed today if you don't get your way emotionally suck that junk up take a trip travel for pleasure last but not least my fellow fish Spies you should get out enjoy and enjoy social events where you are likely to meet new potential mates however don't overspend think of joining a health club that will benefit your physical appearance resist the temptation to gamble risk would not be profitable okay that's a whole lot to unpack in that one okay first of all the first part of our scope get out and meet some new people a potential mate that's for the single folks that's for our single fish okay listening fish that's for the single fish not you married fish not your not you committed fish that's for the single fish to meet the new mate not you I know some of you going I wish no 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 it's not for you you're in a situation okay get out of your situation first and then go out to meet some new folks right now today that's for the single fish yeah it's so funny cuz I just told somebody yesterday I was gonna I was gonna join the gym again and you know the reason my the reason I thought about that was because if you wanna get healthy and fit you need to be around healthy and fit people right and and I thought about that yesterday when I was going through my um my brain dump cuz I go through my brain dump at the end of the day and I was like you know I keep talking about losing this last thirty five pounds and I'm not around anybody trying to lose thirty five pounds I'm not even around anybody trying to lose any pounds and so to me if I wanna lose weight I need to be around people who wanna lose weight but you know it's just boring going to the gym by myself like I don't wanna go to gym by myself but I don't have a gym partner you know so maybe I need to go online and find me a gym partner and just go to the I thought my brother was gonna be my gym partner cuz he was going faithfully but the way his work schedule is is not it's not gonna be doable now here's the thing when school is out he may be my gym partner so I'm thinking seriously about joining the gym again I had a gym membership I let it um go when the covid hit cuz I was like I'm not going in the gym all I could think about was sweat all every everything and we wasn't sure how covid was passed so I was like I'm not going to gym um but I'm thinking seriously about going to the gym joining the gym so fish join me if you're a local fish you know you wanna go to the gym hit your girl up Audrey at GoodMorningGwinnett.com I put gym in the con in the subject line and that lets me know that you're close by and you wanna go to the gym cuz you may be my gym partner alright resist temptation to gamble yes you do that hold on to the money and risks will not be profitable so listen fish hold on to your coins don't take the unnecessary risk don't gamble think about your health and for those of you who don't have um a potential mate get out and have some fun do some social events I'm gonna do something too I'm not doing the look looking for nobody but I'm I'm planning something for the weekend get out and have some fun alright that's all the horoscopes I got for the day I'll be back again tomorrow ten AM and bring you more of the horoscopes brought to you by know that the Sergeant Michael Thies and now let's get on to some news you can use and remember today is Talk Business Tuesday so once I get finished with the news I will be sharing some information with you about growing your business locally so make sure to stick around and hear what I gotta share alright let's get on to some news um Scotty Pippen had an announcement yesterday he announced that his oldest son Antron Pippen who was a former um Collins Hill student passed away he was a basketball standout at Collins Hill when he was there my condolences go out to um Scotty and his family for the loss of his son his son Antron was thirty three years old they didn't say how he passed away they just say he passed away they did state that he had um he had asthma um but he passed away and that was Scotty's oldest son who also was a a a a graduate from Collins Hill High School right here in Gwinnett County so we are so sorry for your loss and you know um our condolences go out to your family for healing um healing the family so that's you know I don't care when when we hear news of loss it's always just a sad thing you don't wanna be sad but it's just a part of life and it let me tell y'all the hardest thing I've ever done in my life is lose my mom I thought I've been through some stuff I have not I had not at that point not real stuff you know I went in her room this morning which is what I would normally do and I just sat there you know and I was like man I wish she was here so I could talk to you right now cuz that's what I would do I would go in there I'd be like you okay she like make me some toast before you do the show I'll make her some toast and then I will do my show and then I come back up and she'll have lunch that's the hardest thing I've ever had to do in my life is miss my mom and I and it still feels it still feels like I'm living in a bad dream so I can't even imagine what it would be like to lose a child I I just can't and I don't want to I don't want to I hope the Lord take me before he take my daughter alright let's keep it going I don't wanna be sad but my you know the loss of his son just you know that anytime I hear loss it does something to me these days it always has and I think it like like I'm the type of person like I have I probably have completely stopped watching the news like I used to watch the seven o'clock news world news tonight every day at seven o'clock that was the news I watched cuz it was thirty minutes so that's about all the news I could take and then on the political side I would watch CNBC um MSNBC at eleven o'clock at night I I've been stopped watching that like I've been stopped watching that when the um when the election was going off like I can't watch it I can't I can't go to bed after watching that so I won't watch that now I don't hardly watch the news at all cuz I just get so tired of hearing all the sad and negative stuff I was like I just I can't the most news I get is the news that I bring you on four days a week here on the Good Morning Gwinnett Show that's about all the news I get and my husband was he sent me something yesterday what did he send me he sent me something I forgot what it was and I was like yeah I don't even know I haven't even looked at the news in probably three months pretty pretty much outside the outside of the news I get from the Gwinnett Daily Post and the and AJC um I don't know I have no idea cuz it's it's just it's so it's so stressful and so sad and it's so depressing and I didn't like that anyway like I didn't like it before but my mom used to always say you gotta watch the news so you'll know what's going on in the world so I would watch world news at seven o'clock now I very rarely watch that like if I turn it on and I just see nothing but covid 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 I'm like oh god or you know the the Republicans doing this and the Democrats are doing that I'm like oh god I just I can't I'm just I'm just I'm burned out from all of that stuff anyway let's keep it going um Gwinnett County distributes twelve point two million dollars in grants to support covid nineteen relief assistance yes Gwinnett County officials have handed out twelve point two million dollars in assistance in the third round of the county's covid nineteen nonprofit funding opportunity program awards the program uses CARES Act money um that the federal government to help nonprofit groups that are providing relief to people who have negative who have been negatively affected um because of the pandemic you know the the pandemic affected a lot of people a lot of a lot of businesses went out of business it it has affected a lot of people but anyway there are two counts of grants for the program that the program issues there's a community um development block grant also known as a CDBG and emergency solutions grant there is money for two initiatives in the county there is money for two initiatives uh the county is undertaking um included in the CBG CBD CB CDG CDBG Community Development Grant um one is a million dollar for Economic Development Initiative aimed at aimed at helping small businesses that are providing covid assistance so a million dollars is set aside for them the other is five hundred and seventy four thousand six hundred dollars for mental health and initiative designed to connect Gwinnett uh county citizens um who have been affected by the pandemic with mental health resources in the community both of these are very important so if you are a small business owner you're serving people um because of the covid nineteen there's a million dollars in grants that are available to you and if you are a mental health uh provider providing help for those who probably just I'm I'm telling y'all this thing is crazy it's taking a turn on a lot of people and some people just need to talk to somebody there's five hundred and seventy four thousand six hundred dollars allocated for your use um so check it out um and it's a part of the CARES Act I I I'm gonna tell you something the one thing I know for sure is that this this virus has changed a lot of people in a lot of different ways mentally it has messed some folks up you know um I deal with it every day and I swear I I deal with I don't wanna I don't wanna put labels on myself but I have anxieties that I've never had before in my life you know and I'm dealing with them you know I'm dealing with them but I have them and I've never had them before I never had them before the pandemic and I have them really bad sometimes to the point where it's hard for me to sleep it's hard for me to drive down the street sometimes and so but it it's getting better and better so I'm saying that to say with you if you need the help there's help available but more information about how to access these resources go to g c g a dot us backslash covid nineteen resources G as in George C as in Charlie G as in George is in apple dot us forward slash covid nineteen resources get the resources you need or just go to the Gwinnett Daily Post and the information is there get those resources to help yourself because they're they're there and they're available for you you know um whether you're a small business helping others or whether you are a person who really needs to talk to somebody cuz you're going through it right now so you know I think last week I talked about it may have been a week before last I talked about um the board knocking off some time at the meetings because people were talking too much at the meetings and they were leaving out of the board meeting the school board meetings at you know past eleven o'clock so they decided to break it down where people will have a certain amount of time to talk where they have postponed that vote for a later date um until May twentieth to they tabled the vote until May twentieth um because they said they got a lot of good feedback you know from what 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 the what was put on the table and they wanna table the vote what was happening was people go in there be a lot of people excuse me there'll be a lot of people the meeting began at seven o'clock and you know if regularly you're joined at ten o'clock but because there were so many people who had so much to say they were going past eleven o'clock and it's like listen we gonna have to break this down because we're gonna be here all night because you got a lot of people you know who have something they wanna say now a lot of people was pissed off it's like listen don't take away our rights to write to say we need to say and other people was like we need to go home you know and I can kinda you know I can kinda understand it cuz if I've been up up all day and now I gotta stay to midnight listen to people gripe but but here's the thing that's what you signed up for I'm just saying it's what you sign up for when you work for when you work for your country and your community that's what you signed up for so I kinda see both both perspectives um but right now they say they about thirty speakers and a couple impromptu arguments involving members of the audience so you got people argue I've never gone to a meeting but this is making me really wanna go like I need to go so I can come back and report to y'all what I saw I've never gone to a school board meeting um and I've never gone to a lot of meetings but I think I'm gonna start going to the meeting so I could understand you know more about how how to how our county work I when I did the um citizens Gwinnett Citizen Academy one on one I thought that was great but I think I need to start going to some of these meetings so I can get a better understanding even more and do a deep dive into okay this is how this work cuz I think when you go to the meetings you do get a better understanding but anyway um that has been tabled for now we're gonna see what happens after that so for more about that story go to ajc.com you can see the whole story there alright I'm going to a song and I'll be right back after this song to give you more of what's going on in and around Gwinnett County stay tuned
from your bottle baby calling it wasted love wasted love
Drinking from your bottle, baby, calling it wasted love, wasted love. I can't get enough of my baby, I'ma be wasted love, wasted love. I'm spilling liquor on the carpet, on the couch, I feel it dripping from my mouth. Drinking from your bottle, baby, calling it wasted love, wasted love. I'll be deep under your influence tonight. Ooh, keep it coming, babe, I don't mind another round. Drinking from your bottle, baby, calling it wasted love, wasted love. I can't get enough of my baby, I'ma be wasted love, wasted love. I'm spilling liquor on the carpet, on the couch, I feel it dripping from my mouth. Drinking from your bottle, baby, calling it wasted love, wasted love.
Welcome back, welcome back. It's your girl Audrey Bell Kearney giving you a daily rundown of what's going on in and around Gwinnett County. So a few mu- a month, but I think it was last month, I was on a, um, I was on a Zoom call with the president. Mason Alstock of, uh, Ro- of the, uh, Rowan Foundation and they did a, it was almost like a focus group to get the input from those of us who live in the area. About the new Rowan, um, Research Center that's gonna be coming here in, in DeKula. And so I found that to be pretty interesting because they asked us our opinion about what, what would we wanna see at that site? Like what kinda houses, what kinda businesses, what kinda opportunities? So you know, for me, it was all about entrepreneurship and training and development. Um, but there were other people who said, you know what, we don't wanna see cookie cutter houses. We wanna see something that's unique. There was one guy who said, and I totally agree with him cuz I think that's pretty cool. He's like, we wanna see houses that are three D printed. I'm thinking that's pretty cool. Cuz I, you know, I feel like three D printed houses give people the opportunity to buy a house and they're not spending, you know, a million dollars if they don't want to. Um, so we gave some really great feedback and it was a lot of us on that Zoom call. So now the Rowan Foundation is partnering with UGA to make sure that the land that they're gonna be developing the research center on. Is preserved and taken care of. So they wanna make sure that anything that's historical, don't get disturbed and anything that they can use, they do. And they wanna be good stories over the land. So that sound really biblical, right? But it's a lot of land and, and they wanna make sure that they don't disturb things that need to be, that need to stay the way they are. And that they utilize and, um, provide a sustainable living space and workspace for those areas that are available. So they have partnered up together to bring together students, researchers, um, grad students, professors. To make sure that the site's natural and cu- cultural history stays intact, which I think is a great thing. I think that's a great thing. Um, the vision for the Rowan Research Center is gonna be medical, environmental, agricultural, mixed-use research park. With offices and research facilities as well as residential options. To entice people to, to, to work where they play and to play where they stay, you know what I mean? So they wanna have this, they want people to live near where they work. That way there's no, no real commute, which I think is cool. Because look, my husband commutes to Marietta every day. I feel bad for him. I would love for him to be, to be able to remo- to like commute right down three sixteen. Which is about seven minutes where the center is gonna be at, you know, go over there and work over there. So now he love his job, he love the people he work with. I don't think that's gonna happen, but you know, it'll, it'll definitely cut down on his travel time. So I understand why they would wanna have a place where you can work, play and live at the same place. I get it, so it makes sense. Um, when this center is completed, it's, it is expected to generate between eighty thousand and a hundred thousand new jobs. Now here's what I would say, cuz I know I'm always on this because I find this to be really important. See, when I was in, when I was coming out of school in college, nobody really gave me a, a, a plan, right? They told me, oh, you're good in math and science, go be an accountant. That's what they said. Um, but nobody, they didn't know me. They just knew what I was good at. Now, because you're good at something doesn't necessarily mean you're gonna be good. Happy with doing that thing. So I went to school to be an accountant and I got kicked out of college. The smart girl, who gets kicked out of college as a smart girl? Me, I did. My mother used to hate when I say that, but it's the truth. And so right now, I feel like there are so many opportunities, even though we're in a tough time right now, I still feel like there are great opportunities out there. Been, hence been this one. If it's gonna, if this company is gonna create eighty thousand to one hun- hundred thousand jobs. It would do you all the good to find out who they are and what they're doing, to find out what's gonna be in those locations, to find out what's gonna. Cuz me, if it's gonna be medical, that means in research, that means you need to know how to become a master researcher. That means you need to go and take your biomedicine course. Something that's gonna put you in a position so you can be marketable when everything is up and running, when you say, you know what, and get to know, get to know these people. I was on a Zoom call with them, you know, get to know, get to know Mason and his team, you know, see how you can participate with what they're doing. Because I can, I can tell you, if there's anything like research triangle, it's gonna be sprawling and it's gonna need a lot of people. But it's gonna need a lot of people with the necessary skills. So get yourself some training. Find out what you love. Here's the other thing, before you do any training, find out what it is you really love. Go take one of them disc, uh, disc, uh, disc assessment programs. It's like the Maya Briggs. So they tell you, look, you may be good as a social worker. You know, that's what it said to me and it, it was probably absolutely spot on because I have a giving heart, you know? And I'm always trying to help folks and I don't charge nearly what I should be charging, things like that, you know, um, those are the type of things that I do. And I should have been a social worker, but it also says that I should have been a writer, which I am. I'll go figure. I'm good in math and science. Um, I think it said I should be a musician, eh eh, not so. Um, and some other things that, that would choose spot on to who I am. So before you even take a training, go find out who you are. And then find a perfect trainer for you, so when the perfect job pops up, you can get it, alright? So just know that that's what's going on here in Gwinnett County. The Rowan Foundation and UGA partnering to make sure that they preserve the land. But also make sure that they bring plenty of jobs, plenty of jobs. To our, to our, to our county, that's gonna help a lot of folks get employed. Alright, there's gonna be a pop-up this coming Saturday. It's gonna be at the, um, it's called Cafe Pop-Up. I think that's pretty cool. I was just, when I tell you, I was just thinking about, um, pop-ups earlier today. There's gonna be one this Saturday at, uh, twelve o'clock. It's gonna be at five sixteen Grayson Parkway. It's called Cafe Pop-Up. It says, come get your spring shopping on by supporting local entrepreneurs. We'll have a variety of vendors from eyewear to footwear, jewelry, candles and much more. Les Cafe, Les Cafe will be selling soul food plates starting at fifteen dollars. Be prepared to enjoy a fun-filled day of shopping, food, music, and, uh, it's also Grayson Day. So it's also Grayson Day this Saturday. Um, I need to find out how I be a vendor cuz I need to go there and, 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 and introduce people to Good Morning Gwinnett. So I'm excited about that. So I will be calling, uh, Cafe Gray, uh, what is it called? Cafe, what is it called? It's a, it's Cafe something. Yeah, anyway, they got soul foods. Those of you who like soul food, I like seafood. I do like some soul food. They used to tell me, they used to, they used to, they used to crack on me all the time cuz I don't eat cornbread. I don't eat corn. I don't eat rice. I don't eat collard greens. I barely eat chicken. I barely eat pork chop. I love ham. I love chitlins. Yeah, so that's just, that's the soul part of me, right? That the chitlins. I know, I know some folks like, girl, I ain't eat no chitlins. I like chitlins. Chitlins is hot balls. I don't eat black eye peas. I don't eat rice. Yeah, I know. They like, are you black? As, as black as they come. I just don't like that stuff. I like, I like seafood. Anyway, this Saturday, twelve o'clock, come out, support the entrepreneurs out there, come out and get some food, do some shopping, listen to some music. I'm probably gonna be there. I just gotta figure out what I gotta do to be there. So come out and check me out cuz I'm, I'm sure I'm gonna be there, alright? Alright, I'm gonna go to another song then I'm gonna come back and give you my talk business tip for the day. Cuz you know it's Talk Business Tuesday where I talk about how to grow your local business. Stay tuned. Welcome back, welcome back. It's your girl Audrey Bell Kearney giving you the daily rundown of what's going on in and around Gwinnett County. And so today is Talk Business Tuesday, so I'm gonna piggyback off the event that's gonna be happening this Saturday at the Les Cafe located five sixteen Grayson Parkway. In Grayson at twelve o'clock. You know, when you, when you have a, a small business and you wanna grow locally, you have to get out in the community. And this is something that I had to learn. You know, I wanna stay behind this microphone and talk to you, but I realized Good Morning Gwinnett is a community show. And so I have only been out in the community probably maybe, maybe two or three times with the show itself. Like I did a, I did an event when I first launched a he- a mental health conference. I did that event, um, where I got a chance to meet a lot of people. I did the chamber event downtown, I mean, down at the, uh, Gwinnett Chamber. I did that event. It was in April, I think. I think I did two ev- events back to back in April where I was actually outside talking to people. And I realized that's something that I've been missing, like I'm behind the mic, I'm on Instagram, I'm on Twitter, I'm on Facebook, I'm on Pinterest, I'm doing all that stuff. But you really need to get out and, 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 and visit your community. Now, what I will tell you is that. A lot of times, I remember back in the day, you would spend a lot of money going to all these different events and you still can. But there are a lot of events where there's no, no, no real charge involved. And I give you a prime example. There is a farmer's market that's gonna be starting in Snellville. It starts in June. It's ten dollars a Saturday. Like really, it's a hundred and eighty dollars for the year. And so I know one of my goals is to make sure that I'm at that event every Saturday. Passing out Good Morning Gwinnett cookies because that's a great way for people to get to know who we are, you know? So that's one of the things I'm doing. You have to get out there and be visible with your community. Now, when I had my other businesses, I was always out, when I was selling books like crazy, I was always out. I was always out doing book signings, doing book tours. I was always out. And you could see the difference in my numbers because I was out there visiting people. I think we've become so accustomed to doing everything online till we don't wanna get out. And if you're running a community business, you gotta get out. You know, you gotta get out there, introduce yourself to the people. Um, you gotta, something that I have not been good at and that is wearing my Good Morning Gwinnett T-shirts and my jerseys and all that kinda stuff. I will be doing that this Saturday. I will have on a Good Morning T-shirt, Good Morning Gwinnett T-shirt, um, and I'll be prepared to talk to folks. So you wanna get out there, you wanna make sure that you have business cards. You wanna make sure that you have marketing materials on hand. Now here's the thing, um. You may wanna put together a beautiful brochure, but people tend to throw brochures in the garbage. I try to give, I'm trying to give away something that they're gonna remember, like the cookie. Like the Good Morning Gwinnett cookies, I, so I make this cookie. I can't tell you how to make it. It's a secret. If I tell you, I'm gonna have to kill you. But I make this cookie that everybody loves in my house. It's almost like an icebox cookie. And, um, we bought everything we needed. We have a cookie printer, we have a cookie printer that print on the cookies. Um, we have, um, the, the certain, the certain type of icing you gotta do to put on the cookies. So I have this cookie that I make. I'm gonna make the cookie. And I love the cookie. Like I would eat the whole pan of cookies because I love, so it was my, it was my recipe. And I was like, okay, my daughter kinda shared her recipe with me and then I, I kinda formulated it to the way I like my cookies. And the cookie's delicious. To me it is. And, but when I make them, everybody eat them up, so everybody must like them. They were like, that's a good little cookie. It's kinda hard though. It's a hard little cookie. But it's a good cookie. And so, um, you know, hopefully, uh, you will see me out this, this Saturday handing out my, my, my Good Morning Gwinnett cookies. You know, but that's what I'm doing. Like I want people to, I want people to, to know about Good Morning Gwinnett. I want people in the community to support the show so I can keep doing the show. I want them to download the app. I want them to share the show with their friends. I want them to come on the show and be my guest. I want them to come on the show or go to the website and tell me what you want me to know so I can announce it on the show. Tell me whose birthday it is, who's celebrating the anniversary, who's having a, a baby, who just got engaged. I wanna share that stuff on the show. And so for me, right now, being behind the, behind the mic all day long, I need to get outside and meet the community. And so when I go outside, yeah, I could take my business card and I probably will, but you better believe it's gonna be a cookie attached to it. Why? Because I want them to remember the cookie. If they remember the cookie, they will remember Good Morning Gwinnett. I know that, that sounds kinda crazy, but when you give people something to remember, they will remember you, but it has to be something that sets you apart. So I got my famous cookie recipe that I'm using. I'm gonna make the cookies and I want them to come out. Matter of fact, I just had an idea for something else I'm gonna do too. I want them to take the cookie and the business card and when they see the business card and the cookie, they'll always remember me. Oh, that was a good, Good Morning Gwinnett cookie. Yes, they can eat the Good Morning Gwinnett off the top of the cookie. So we have a, we have a, a cookie printer, a, a edible ink printer that we're gonna make. Uh, print out the labels for the cookies and put them on top of the cookies, which is pretty cool. And, um, this way people get to meet me, they get to know me, they get to eat the cookie. Now that's my cookie and I ain't sharing my recipe. Some people may go, may say, that's a hard cookie. I happen to like the cookie. And in my house, everybody else seem to like it too cuz they eat it up. So anyway, this, this is just something simple that you could do to help grow your business locally. Go out to events and become a vendor. As a matter of fact, host your own event. So you know, I'm gonna go to this event on Saturday, preferably to partner with these guys. They already have a location. I don't mind talking about the show, talking about the event on the show every week. Um, I just need to be able to pop up on Saturdays and, and then, and pass out these cookies so people can say, you know what? Let's download the Good Morning Gwinnett app. And right, so you may not think that an app is important, but it is. Because right now, I do a podcast four days a week. If you wanna go back and listen to the podcast without searching through podcasts, other podcasts. You can go straight to my podcast app and listen to the show. That's the great thing about having my own app. And so I have an app for the show. If you wanna go and read a blog post, if you got news and you wanna send me a press release to put on the website with a picture. And people, and send people there to read that, that press release. I do all those things for the community, but I think a lot of people in the community don't know because. I'm pretty much online most of the time. Now I have to get outside in the community so people can know exactly what I do. I'm a member of the chambers, two chambers. I'm gonna join the third chamber. I'm very active in both chambers. I'm gonna join the third chamber. Um, you know, I even thought about starting my own business association, which I just made. I have a, I have a podcast meetup called Podcast Posse. We meet mon- once a month. We get together, we talk about podcasting. So these are the things that I'm doing to grow locally. And these are some of the things you can do to grow local. Now here's the thing, you don't have to do all the stuff that I do. Yeah, I'm just a business fanatic, right? I love what I do and I do a lot of stuff. Um, don't, don't listen to all the stuff I do. Take the things that, that you can use and, and to help you grow your business and do those things. If this is going to three or four networking events a month, passing out business cards, then that's what you do. Don't do what I do. Because I do a lot of stuff. I do a lot. If you look at my to-do list, you be like, oh my God, I'm gonna lose my mind. Um, but I, that's how I function. So you know, pick, pick one thing, find one event that you can vend it or find one event that you could do yourself. You know, host a monthly event because what happens is people will come out to your event and they will keep coming and keep coming and keep coming. And now your company is the sponsor for that event, like, like Les Cafe, that's the name of the cafe, Les Cafe. It is the sponsor for this pop-up Saturday that's happening this Saturday. And what, what did I see there? I saw it on the patch. Now what am I doing now? I'm talking about it on the podcast, right? That's how this thing works. And then I'm gonna tell two people and they gonna tell two people. We probably gonna all show up on Saturday at Les Cafe, right? That's what, that's probably what's gonna happen. We're gonna show up at the cafe. I got a meeting Saturday at two thirty, so chances I'm gonna tell the people that I'm supposed to meet with. Hey, let's meet in Grayson at Les Cafe where I'll be vending, passing out cookies. So we'll. So we'll, the event'll be over, I'll have a chance to meet and greet and then meet with, with my business partner, so just think about simple things that you can do to grow local and trust me, people will start to get to know you the more you're out there. When I was out there, when I was heavily out doing, doing business, people knew me. You know, I haven't been heavily out there in the community signing books, signing dolls, you know, passing out mags, I haven't been doing any of that thing, those things, but I will be now. Like right now, the goal is to get Good Morning Gwinnett in front of as many people as possible. Yes, it's global, but I'm talking about locally, like the show is global, it's in a hundred countries. But I need to know my community, I need the community to know me, I need to know, I need them to know that there's a resource here that's here to help them grow their businesses, get their messages out, share their stories, I need them to know that. And they don't, I don't, I think a lot of local people don't know that, global people know. Like a lot of people we have on the show are not from Gwinnett, because they know about me. I don't think people in Gwinnett know enough about me, so the goal is to get out there and grow local. So I hope this has helped, helped you, I hope this Talk Business Tuesday tip has helped you to think about how you can grow your business local. I'll be back again next Tuesday to give you another Talk Business Tip on how to help you grow your business local. I'm gonna go to my last song, then I'm gonna close it out for the day, so stay tuned. Tony Dorsett said that he was absolutely right. I get up every morning to do this show, it's my, it's what motivates me, it's what I'm holding on to, it's what, it's what inspires me. I did the show yesterday and I said to Georgia when I got finished, I was like, you know, I really love doing this show, and she said, I know. I really do, y'all, I smile as I sit here because I love doing this show. And I wanna be able to touch more lives, I wanna be able to share stories for, of, of more people that's gonna inspire and motivate you for you to think outside of the box, for you to see what's possible and the things that you could be doing. You know, you gotta find something to hold on to. Trust me, I know that when you're not passionate about something and if it don't motivate you, you would not succeed at it. I've tried too many things that I was not passionate about, that I did not succeed at because I wasn't. This thing right here I love, and it was funny because everybody knows I love it. And I'm gonna hold on till I take it to where I want it to be. And I'm gonna hold on until I tell the people, listen to the show so you can be inspired, so you can follow your dreams, so you have something to hold on to, so something can motivate you. I hope I do that, I hope I, I hope I motivate people with this show. I'm sure I probably piss off a few people when I talk politics, but that's okay. You know, better pissed off than pissed on, ain't that the truth? That's the truth, Ruth. Listen, that's all I got for you today, but before I go, I wanna say thank you again for listening. You could've been anywhere in the world, but you spent the last hour, almost hour, fifty-seven minutes with me, and I appreciate you and love you to life for that. If you missed any episode of the show, be sure to go to goodmorninggwinnett.com and listen to past episodes there. Also, be sure to follow me on Facebook at Good Morning Gwinnett, follow me on Instagram at Good Morning Gwinnett, and follow me on the Twitter at GM Gwinnett. Download the app from the App Store, if you got an Apple phone or Android phone, we have an app for you for Good Morning Gwinnett. And if you listen to the show on Apple Podcasts, be sure to go to Apple Podcasts and find your favorite two episodes and give it five stars. Be sure to share the show with your friends and family, listen, tell your friends and family you love them. Tell your friends and family you love them. Um, and, and make sure to stay safe out there, coronavirus is still floating around, now her cousins have joined her B sixteen and B thirteen, I'm just making those numbers up, but it's B something. Stay safe, keep your mask on there, wash your hands, do all the things you're supposed to do. I'll talk to you again tomorrow at ten AM, God willing, until next time, y'all, make it a great day, bye now.